Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Monday, November 2nd, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that the meetings be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations through adequate alternative means. In this case, we're utilizing Zoom, and we've listed information for joining the meeting on the school district website. Just another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the school district website. The first and only item on the agenda this evening under Old Business is the discussion and recommendation to shift to hybrid learning.
Dr. Gogan, I understand you conducted two surveys and you have some results for us?
I do. Hello to everyone. I hope everyone is doing well, and it's nice to see a large crowd with us tonight. I do have some results, but before I share that, I just thought, since there's a lot of people on, I'd just do a brief recap of where we've been and where we're going and why we're here. Just to start, we worked with a reopening committee, starting last summer, to put together the district reopening plan. I do want to let everyone know that there were over thirty participants in that committee. We developed a plan that we presented to the school committee in accordance with what the DESI guidance was. We also developed a COVID leadership team, and that team meets weekly. It's comprised of principals and nurses and the board of health director. The plan that we presented was presented pretty early on for districts. We presented it back in July. And on July 27th, the school committee approved that plan and approved it again in August. And our plan has always stated that we were aiming to go to hybrid. We presented a plan where we would roll out remote, and we said that we would reassess where we were at on September 22nd. And on September 22nd, we did reassess where we were. We had been in school for five days at that point. And at that meeting, we recommended that we move to hybrid on October 19th. The school committee supported this recommendation of moving to hybrid on the 19th, with the caveat that we would wait and see if we had cases, and the board of health would still approve that we made the shift. The COVID leadership meeting, team leadership meeting met, and it was unanimous at that time that we would bring forth a recommendation that we would hold off moving to hybrid on the 19th. At the October 13th school committee, we brought that recommendation to the school committee. And it was unanimous from the COVID leadership team that we would hold off going to hybrid. Not that we don't want to see the kids, because we certainly do, but given that we were in the red, we felt it was in our best interest. Again, that was presented to the school committee on the October 13th, and we held off. We left that meeting knowing that we were going to come back to reassess where we were and how we were going to hybrid, which is where we're at, almost at. We had a meeting on October 27th, and you had requested that I do some surveys, and I have, and I do have the results to share with you. But I just want to point out that at no point were we pushing hybrid completely off. We were just following the current guidance that we had. We all know that the guidance is changing, so we're here tonight. I do have some results. We did send out a survey to our staff, and the survey question asked if they were ready to move into hybrid, into the hybrid model, and there were several questions that they could answer. Yes, right to the hybrid right now. Yes, when Webster is one week out of the red. Yes, when Webster is two weeks out of the red. And yes, when Webster is three weeks out of the red. And no. The results of the staff show that sixteen point seven percent of our staff are prepared to shift to hybrid now. Four point five are prepared to shift to hybrid one week out of the red. Twelve point seven percent are prepared to shift to hybrid two weeks out of the red. And fifty one point six percent are prepared to shift out of hybrid three weeks out of the red. And fourteen point five percent said that they are not prepared to shift to hybrid at all. So as you can see from the staff results, there's an overwhelming sixty eight point, actually, it's sixty eight point eight percent of the staff are really leaning towards waiting till at some point when Webster is out of the red. We sent the same question to our families. We emailed over two hundred parent emails, and we had five hundred and nineteen responses. And their results are quite different. We have very different views going on. So forty one point four percent of the families that answered are prepared to shift to hybrid now. Four point six are prepared to shift to hybrid one week after they're being out of the red. Eleven point two percent are prepared to shift to hybrid two weeks out of the red. Twenty point six percent are prepared to shift to hybrid three weeks out of the red. And twenty two point two percent are not prepared to shift to hybrid at all. So as you can see, there's thirty six point four percent that would like to wait out of the families sometime until Webster is out of the red. And there are twenty two point two percent that are prepared not to send their students to any hybrid model. So I believe that is the data that you were looking for. And, you know, we're here tonight because we've heard, as we've all heard, the governors come out and stated that schools are not super spreader places and is ask, are asking for schools that were in the red and going into school to stay in school. So we're kind of at a point now where we see that the metrics are changing. I think we've been following the plan that we have created. We've been following the metrics and the guidance that we had. But now, things are starting to shift. As recent as today, I was on the phone with the Commissioner of Education, and there are new metrics that are going to be shared there, I think, in the works of being processed. So at our last meeting, the school committee requested this meeting to discuss what they'd like to see as new metrics moving forward. So that's a synopsis of the survey and where we've been and where we are. I think I'd like to toss it back to the school committee to hear what different metrics they are anticipating or would like us to take a look at.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
And before we go too far into that, the school committee did receive some correspondence over the last week. Today, in fact, one of them was from Mrs. Jeffers, representing the Webster Educators Association. Mrs. Jeffers, I wondered, we read the letter, but would you like to say a few words about where the teachers are at and sort of how you all are feeling about coming back into a hybrid model?
I will try. I keep saying that my internet is unstable, so I will try. But I did, we did pen the letter that you've received. I had one hundred two of my one hundred sixty, one hundred sixty-two members that had input into that letter. Of those one hundred two, eighty-nine felt that we should wait until we are out of the red. There's many other things, not just the fact that the town is red, but we need some preparation, some strategies as far as what happens if we have absences within the school. Right now, when there's absences in the schools, there's hardly any subs. We may be lucky if we have one sub per school. A lot of times, the children are split into different classes. Or as opposed as the high school does it, they have to have teachers covering the class so students can have many teachers in one day. We need some kind of a strategy for the staffing issues that we're going to have. I think that's, that's the greatest issue that we have. Many sorry, it's going out on me again. You have, you have our letter. There were some other questions at the bottom of the letter. I don't know if you've noticed some things that we would like considered. Hold on, just one second. It closed out on me. I had it on my phone. So we, not only is it a low-risk community, but what is the plan if we do have to close one of the schools? Is there a plan for any testing? I know there's, there's districts that have formed collaboratives that have brought in some testing. Is, have all of our staffing positions been filled? That's another issue. We don't have the proper staffing, not only substitutes, but the proper staffing. Then we'd be behind the eight ball on that one, too. Are there plans for a shutdown? So we know that there's going to be staffing issues. We have to set up some kind of a system that if there are, so let's take the high school where we have, I believe it's forty-five staff members. If we have fifteen staff members out at any certain time, teachers-wise, because they are answering questions on the daily check-in that we have to do, they are taking precautions, staying home if they do have to answer those questions in the affirmative. What's the plan if we have to shut down? We'd like all those things considered before we, you know, and the plan set up before we actually head into hybrid.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeffers. Now, there are very strong feelings, I think, on both sides of this debate, if I can call it that. And we also received some correspondence from parents. I don't know if Nicole Savicinski, are you here tonight, Nicole, by any chance? I think in her message, she said she would be driving to work. And I really do not want to turn this meeting into, you know, every sort of, every person who joins the meeting saying their piece. I don't know if there is a representative from the parents who put together the petition that would like to say a few words about sort of the struggle and your strong feelings about getting children back into school. Is there anyone that's able to sort of bring us up to speed on that? Well, I hope that somebody, you know, either reacts through chat, if that's available, or says something. I'll just continue it by saying that, you know, it's a challenging time. I do, I'm a parent and I do have kids in the district. But I feel that it's very important for each of us as members of the committee. When we come into these meetings, we are elected to represent the constituents of Webster and the families that elect us. So for that reason, you know, each time we come in, I know I'm taking off my parent hat and putting on my my school committee hat. So for that reason, I would really love to hear from another parent or somebody who, there was, I know there was a lot of discussion about that petition, so I was just really hoping there might be somebody who wanted to say a few things.
Ellie, I'd be happy to speak.
Okay, thank you. Could you please state your name for the record?
Yep, I'm Jennifer McKay. I have children in both Park Ave and in the middle school. I did sign the petition that students should be going back to at least hybrid, a hybrid model. What is happening right now is not working for these children. Isolation is terrible for them. There is damage being caused that we can't even fathom right now. And I'm starting to see the signs of it in an ADHD child, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in that position. And quite frankly, I feel that my child is being discriminated against, because why should one group get to go four days a week? And my child not get to go any. And he learns in a classroom, not on a computer seven hours a day. And there is no consideration being taken into that. I sympathize with the teachers, but this is your job. And your job is to educate our children, and that's not happening right now. And I would really love it if somebody else would say what's on their mind on this, on the subject, too.
I would like to speak if that's allowed.
Thank you, Mrs. McKay. Could you please state your name?
Corey Hinkle.
Thank you.
Yes, I have two seniors. They're twins in the school. We've been here in the school for ten years. I've had four kids go through the school system. I love Webster, so just to put that out there. But this isn't working. My concern is you've had eight months to plan, so when someone says, we don't know what we're doing, you know, we don't know what the plan is, we do have a plan. We've had plans for months. We've had other meetings that if there's a kid in Section C in the high school gets a positive, that section sits down and it's cleaned and it's scrubbed. We've had the meetings. We do have plans. The teachers are teaching online, so I don't know what we're talking about staffing issues. They're teaching our kids currently, so I'm not sure what staffing issues we're talking about. And quite frankly, I'm really frustrated that when we were in the green, we still weren't allowed to go in person, and you guys pushed it back another month. Then we get in the red, and then it's, oh, now we can't go for three weeks, you know, until we're three weeks out of the red. But you wouldn't even let us go when we were in the green. So from a parent's perspective, we feel like it's just excuse after excuse after excuse, and that the teachers are running this. And there may be whatever amount of teachers, but there's a lot more kids, and there's a lot more families, and there's a lot more damage. You know, my kids have been sitting in their bedrooms staring at the walls for eight months. That is not healthy. The only socialization they get is because they both have a job. That's it. They need to be in class. They are the lowest risks, you know, section for this virus. This virus has a ninety-eight percent recovery rate. You know, we're all not going to die. I promise. This is being blown out of proportion. If you don't want to send your kid to school like the first one over the summer was, you know, are you going to homeschool your kid? Are you going to allow them to come and say whatever? Fine, you keep your kid at home if you have an elderly grandmother that lives with you or something, and you're worried. Keep your kid at home, but allow mine to go. And I agree a one hundred percent that I feel like it's almost reverse discrimination that the specialized kids get to go to school. Some of these kids, you know, are very, very, very disabled, I'm assuming. But my kid who's in AP classes and all these things that needs that teacher more, too. They, they need it, too. They're being discriminated against. So are you okay with the specialized kids getting sick? Who's teaching them? That those teachers don't, aren't crying that they're in school and having to teach them. So to me, it should be all or nothing, not all in school, but I'm saying if they're allowed to go in, then our kids should be allowed to go in in the hybrid. And like I said, when we were in the green, you wouldn't let us go in. Now you won't let us go in because of the red. Then it's going to be three weeks out of the red, but you wouldn't even let us go when you were green. So if someone could speak to that, I'd be curious to know why, when we were in the green, we couldn't go in. But now, we're in the red, we can't go in. There's no, there's no logic to what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Hinkle.
Somebody, can somebody hear me?
Yes, I think we'll have one more person share. I don't want to go too far with this, but could you please state your name?
Danielle Kalman.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I just wanted to give a little bit of a perspective. I'm a teacher, but also a parent perspective. My son's daycare, you know, they have babies and toddlers, so kids younger than our kindergarten-age children, that would be the youngest going to Park Ave, they started back at the end of June, you know, June 28th, I think it was exactly. Now you have, you know, they're not following the procedures as much as some of our five-year-olds would be as far as washing hands. You know, they don't know to not put things in their mouth or, you know, be extra cautious like that. And my daycare has done a phenomenal job, and there's been no outbreaks, no cases that I've heard of, nobody getting super sick. So I guess that's just another perspective. My children now go to St. Joe's. They've been going there since the beginning of school. They opened up right away. And their class sizes probably range anywhere from, I don't know, seventeen kids upwards towards twenty-one. And they're all in the same classroom, so they're not cutting their classroom sizes in half. And I know the school itself is smaller, but I guess the point is they're socially distancing. They're making these kids wash their hands and be really careful. They're getting outside as much as possible, which I know is easier to do when the weather is nice. And they've had no major outbreaks. And I just think it's been a saving grace as far as my children's mental health is concerned. They love school, they're learning, and they struggled in the spring with remote learning. And so I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalman.
Thank you.
So I just, you know, once again, I really feel like it's important that we're able to hear directly from, from some folks and get a little feel for where everyone's coming from before we go into talking about the data and the metrics. I know that we have been following the recommendations that have been put forth, but it's felt like just as we approach that goal line, something changes that makes it feel like we need to push that goal line out so much further. So I think that, that may be cause for people feeling like we need to look at things a little bit differently, which is what brought us here tonight. So that's just sort of a summary and to bring us up again to sort of where we're at now, I'll open it up to the rest of the committee.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopoulos.
So there's just some data points I want to point out that have really changed my mindset of keeping everybody at home and definitely moving towards a hybrid system. I really dove into these figures of the last couple of days. The DOE site for Massachusetts has been releasing data over the last few weeks on a weekly basis. On 10/21, there were two hundred and two positive cases in all public schools in Massachusetts with five hundred and twenty-five thousand students and faculty in school. That's a positivity rate of point zero three eight percent. Last week on 10/28, that went up to two hundred and eighty-six people and slightly increased the positivity rate to just point zero five four percent. Last week, the Boston Globe wrote an article, "Since September, There's Been Five Hundred Eighty-Nine Students and Three Hundred Eighteen Staff in Entire Commonwealth Have Tested Positive." For the entire state, since the kids went back in these school systems, the positivity rate is only point one seven two seven percent. Also, the DOE website lists how many kids and staff have tested positive in each district. And the districts around us, Auburn for last week, zero. Douglas, zero. Grafton had one student. Millbury had one staff person. Oxford had zero. Northbridge had one staff. Southbridge, zero. Oxbridge, zero. Dudley and Charlton, zero. Sort of the nine towns directly around us, there was one student and two staff members that tested positive. I really think that if we look at the numbers that are being reported by the schools that are currently there, it shows that the positivity rate is very, very low. I also think if we look at the schools that have had kids go back, Douglas, Dudley, Bay Path, Thompson, Putnam, they've had positive cases, they've dealt with them, and they've kept their kids in school. So I really think that the data points that are being released by the state point to the fact that schools are not super spreaders and there are methods to getting these kids back in front of teachers that will protect both the staff and the students.
Thank you, Mr. Adamopoulos. Are there any other comments from the committee?
Ms. Siddiqui.
Mrs. Blake.
I just want to echo what, what member Adamopoulos has said, but also I have a question about attendance during remote learning so far and failure rates. Ms., Dr. Gogan, or I don't know if you're able to speak to this, but do you know what the failure rate is at, at the moment, at W, at Middle School and/or Bartlett? I'm just wondering how remote learning is going and if that's reflected in their grades.
Sure. At the last school committee meeting, I shared the number of students that were participating and the number of students that were being followed for low participation rates. I've not gathered the failure rates as yet, but we can certainly get that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Naparata, yes?
So I just want to comment on a couple of items. First, I think that the, both the surveys that were taken recently, this past week, but also initially, I think it's very evident that the majority of the parents here in Webster want to move to a hybrid model. According to, I think this must have been one of the surveys that either came out over the summer or right at the beginning of September, twenty percent at Park Ave would choose remote, twenty-eight percent at Webster Middle School would choose remote, and thirty-three percent at the high school would choose remote. So the majority are looking for a hybrid model. And I also want to comment on the letter from the Education Association. I think that it did highlight some valid points and had some good questions at the end to outline. And I know Ellen spoke about those questions and really being prepared to move towards a hybrid model. And my thought and my hope is that we were prepared to move to the hybrid model on October 19th, but something changed and we stopped and we pulled back. So I, my understanding is that the majority of preparations are already completed. That's not to say that there won't be bumps in the road or some things that we might need to reconsider. Absolutely, that will happen, but DESI has given a lot of guidance regarding protocols, not only safety protocols, but scenarios. I mean, they, they've laid out scenarios step by step. This is what you do when. So I think that the schools, the administration, the teachers, they've all been through the training. They are prepared to welcome students back in the hybrid model. And I, I also agree with Corey that, you know, it's tough to play Monday morning quarterback and say, you know what? Maybe we should have just bought them in on September 15th, when our numbers were good. Because if we had, then would we have pulled out? Or would we have been like the districts around us that slipped into the red and continued to, continued with in-person instruction? So I, my hope regarding the purpose of the meeting tonight is that we can come up with a date that we can say this is when we want to bring students back. Again, with the understanding that unfortunately, that too could change if, depending on what we determine to be the absolute worst metrics that we would make that judgment call.
Thank you, Mrs. Naparata.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Millet.
I think we all want the students to go back to a hybrid setting. It's just, is it safe to do that? And when is it safe to do that? And there will be, have to be some stipulations there. And one very important one is, will there be enough staff? And are parents prepared to get a phone call maybe in the morning that says, we don't have enough staff at the school, you need to keep your student home? Because there's a very high absentee rate right now. And as the town is in red, and we've had some unfortunate incidents in town where people have been about, out and about positive in the town. So I don't think and I could change my mind, but I don't know how we can have a specific date. But we can have a plan. And to look at that plan, if we have to, weekly. To see if it's feasible to go back. But there are going to be some stipulations on or restrictions on everybody's part. And I will say this. Not only stu- the students, I know are having a very difficult time being home. But we all are. At one, in one way or another. We all are. And we just. We're not against a hybrid. We just want it to be the safest and most prepared. And best thing we can do for our students. And have everything we can in place, but unfortunately, that's changing. Daily, sometimes hourly. About, especially in our town. So I think we look, need to look at the big picture about not, are we going back hybrid? I would say yes, we, that's our goal, is to be hybrid. But what's the best way to do that?
Mrs. Millet.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Navarada.
I agree with you, Millie, regarding um the staffing concerns because I know Dr. Gogan. Has talked about those at our past meetings. I think that's just. Something that will need to be planned for and it's not an easy task. I can't imagine there's been any easy tasks. Since March, um but that, that is just something that's going to, we're going to have to prepare for, whatever that means. I, I don't see any of these as obstacles to us moving forward with selecting a date. And making sure the plans to the best of our ability are in place for that date.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopoulos, yes?
I will state that at least my personal preference would be that we try to work towards a specific date tonight. Um, I think we owe it to the staff, the students and the parents to give them an idea of this is when we're going back. We're committed to this at this point. We're going to try this because if we. Say it's going to be two weeks or it's going to be three weeks after we get all the red. Then you may go two weeks in the green or the yellow and then all of a sudden, everyone's ready to go back and we go back into the red and we're starting all over again. Um, I think it's essential that we, we pick a date. Knowing that we're going to have a plan in place that we worked on. Um, I know Dr. Gogan worked very hard at the end of the summer to get those plans before Desi um for the commissioner signed off on. That a lot of the um professional development when schools start was geared towards making sure the teachers were prepared for this. Uh, and I just want to point out again, I mean, all the towns around us. Have gone to hybrid and have shown that they're able to make it work. If anything. We should be the community that gets to learn from what did and did not work for them. I think that's a big advantage for us, but we, we have to commit to going back at some point. Uh, just so that everyone has a firm date in place. That's at least my mindset.
Why not just the Monday after Thanksgiving?
I'm sorry, um, could you state your name, please?
Uh, my name is Dan Yorado. Um, so. If you're thinking about a date and nobody really wants to throw it out there, right? I mean, there's been. Months and months of planning like many of the people have said here. So the groundwork for what you guys want to do is already been put out there, right? You already have all the checks and balances in place that you're going to need. So you just need to set a date. That's all that needs to happen. And three weeks from now, the month, the Monday after Thanksgiving seems like it would be. Enough time for everybody to get in motion and, and move forward. But nobody's willing to say it, you know, you're just saying that we could set a date, but nobody's saying a date. So just. Throw a number out there and see if it sticks to this point.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Corey Hinkle, again, um, you know, just back to the question of why is there still a question of planning? We had a plan a- at the beginning of the school year, so that's frustrating. And as your own surveys said, thirty percent of the parents want to keep their kids remote. So if those parents keep their kids home, we'll have even better social distancing. Thirty percent of those kids in cohort A and B won't be there. You know, so I mean, and, and again, I'm asking, why does people keep talking about teachers, teacher um. Staffing issues? Do we have a million teachers out sick or something right now? That we're not aware of because my kids all have a teacher in front of that computer teaching every day. So what staffing issue do we have? If somebody could address that because that's been mentioned like three times now and I'm not aware of any staffing issues.
Very quickly, before we move into addressing the staffing issues, you mentioned about the planning and I think we were among the first of the communities in Massachusetts to submit our plan. To Desi. Uh, so that planning occurred long before the school year began.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what we're still planning for, you know?
Sure.
We have a plan to go back tomorrow. Flip a switch and go.
I'll let Dr. Gogan address your question regarding um staffing issues. Uh, but just before we move into that, sorry, Dr. Gogan. Um, we, we had, we held a certain period at the beginning of this meeting where we asked for input. Um, from members of the community and, and from Mrs. Jeffers. Um, but that, that period really is over now and this has now become more of a business meeting. That's okay.
All right, I apologize.
Very good point.
It's just, it's just hard to hear new stuff and not interject. I apologize.
Sure. No, I understand and people are feeling really strongly about this issue. So we do want to make sure that we address some of those concerns, but. Um, out of respect for all of us that are sitting here, um, I just want to make sure that we, after we address this question, that we move into the planning process that we came here to do tonight. Dr. Gogan.
Thank you. Um, I understand that parents may not understand what we're doing every day at school, but. Um, we do have a plan and we continue to plan every day for different contingencies that pop up. And I don't want any of this to come off as a deterrent because I think we all have the united. Belief that we want some sense of normal schooling back for our chi- children. Everybody wants that. Um, we are not opposed to going to hybrid, but our original plan did state we would be um putting safety first. So just to get to staffing and some of the um questions that have been raised about why aren't we ready? Why can't we just flip a switch? It's not that easy. Um, we were ready um with a hybrid model for October nineteenth. Um, given that we have different needs with our staff. At different buildings, um, some of what we thought we were going to roll out for hybrid may not work at one of our buildings. So some children may need to be um. Given new teachers and we may have to set up, well, we will have to set up remote models of just the remote kids. Um, in grades one through four. So that we can fit all of our children in each classroom. And there's a limit to the amount of children that can be in each classroom based on the six feet distancing. So that's something that we haven't done yet because we didn't have a date for hybrid that still needs to happen. So um, that needs to happen. With hybrid model, we will be busing more children. So the busing schedules need to happen. So that when kids change cohorts, the busing schedules change and the busing routes may change. So that has to happen. Not that we haven't been planning for that, but don't put that in action until right before it happens. Um, in terms of staffing shortages. Um, that's a real worry and I will tell you why that's a real worry. Because we cannot take ten students from a classroom and put them over into the next classroom. And have twenty kids to one adult because that goes against the guidance. We have to have backup plans. We have already been working with our administrative team to know what is the threshold? What is the point of where we would not be able to service children? And I'm not saying this again to scare people, but I think in planning. You look at worst case scenarios so that you're more proactive in case they happen. How would we deal with not having enough staff? It might be like a snow day. It might be um, there's fifteen percent of the staffing out in Bartlett High School today. And the principal may make a call and say, if it's cohort A, cohort A needs to be remote. Um, today because we don't have staffing. I do want the whole community to know that we have been advertising for long-term subs in our building. We have been advertising for paraprofessionals in our building. We have called back our paraprofessionals, all of them. Um, that could come to work and we are trying our best to get people to come and help us to have the staffing. Um, so the important piece that I want everyone to hear is that we're in this together, right? Where this, there are two different views on this, but we all have the same underlying wish. To get back to normal schooling. Um, we need that partnership with our families and we need our families to have emergency plans because. Just like we're re- remote learning, there are bumps and bruises along the way. It's not ideal. Um, we don't know what all the issues are going to be with hybrid. That's not a deterrent. I'm not trying to deter. But I'm trying to explain why we potentially may have staffing. If there's a close contact in our school, um, staff. If you are confirmed close contact, staff have to stay out of school for fourteen days. So they may be able, if they don't, if they feel well, they may be able to work remotely if they feel well. And have permission, but the children in school will still need coverage. So those are some of the things that we're balancing and I don't expect everybody to understand those complex organizational issues. But I can assure you that we have not stopped planning. We are continually looking at those kind of issues so that when and if um. We run into an, an episode of that, we have a clearly communicated plan and it's not a surprise to our families. Um, so those are some of the things that are going on.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any other comments from the committee or any recommendations?
Um, I just have a recommendation, Mrs. Madam Chair. Um.
Yes, Mrs. Blythe.
Um, a lot of college students are going to be home soon and I know. Even in the instance of my son, he'll be home for about two and a half months. I mean. Maybe put that out there um that some of the college kids could put into sub and get quarried. And it just, just a thought, right? Because they're going to be home and not doing much else because everybody's home. So just a thought. Um, and I know we had a, you know, we have a really good connection with Mahfay. And again, I know we don't want to keep rotating people in and out. Um, but I just didn't know if there was somebody, you know, if there were still employees there that. Would like to use a day of volunteering. I mean, you know, get paid but volunteering through work um even. So just another thought. I know we like to try to get creative and think outside the box. Um, so that's just a couple of ideas that, that came to mind.
Thank you. Um, and I, just so you know, I have been in contact with Mahfay and um some of their regulations are, they're, they're willing to do remote. Subbing so that they're not coming into our building as well.
Yep.
And it's the in-person piece that we're going to fall short on, but um certainly uh we will continue to brainstorm and, and solve the obstacles. All right? So we're going to solve the obstacles. We never, we haven't stopped solving obstacles since this has um occurred. Um, and everyone is putting their best foot forward. And although people may not see that out in the community, I want to speak on behalf of every employee in the district in Webster. Um, everyone is coming to work and doing their best right now and. Coming in and subbing in a COVID pandemic is very different than coming in and subbing in a normal environment. You have to be able to multitask and um have kids on screen and kids in person. Which I'm sure that all of our teachers could tell you is a learning curve and very, very, very challenging.
What is the dis- error of the committee?
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Millet?
Um, we have already voted on. Um, having, not going back until we were three weeks out of the red. So I think we should. Either. Change, I keep that to three or change it to two, but attach it to. The date. Saying if it, by this date, if the town is. So many weeks, whatever we decide out of the red, then we would go hybrid. Because as we all know, the governor put even more restrictions today. Um, on what we cannot do right now. Things will change as of Friday. So I think we need to um. Take the safety part, keep the safety part in in some way.
Thank you, Mrs. Millet. Is there a motion that someone would like to put forth?
Through the chair, I'd make a motion, but um it may not be exactly what Ms. Millet was saying. I would make a motion that we choose November sixteenth as a return date.
I would second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please? Member Navarada.
Yes.
Member Blythe.
Yes.
Member Adamopoulos.
Yes.
Member Millet.
No.
Chair Siddiqui. Yes. The motion passes. It's a little sooner than I was expecting, um, but I do think that we need to get the kids back. So it looks like that is um. That is. How we will proceed. Dr. Gogan, is that feasible?
I, I will do my best and um. In just looking at the calendar, I just want to make the school committee aware that the week after the sixteenth is the Thanksgiving break. Um, so the thirtieth might be a little bit more of a reasonable date. Um, than the sixteenth, just for the sake of routine for students as well, but. Um, because as you know, cohort A goes to school on Monday and Tuesday. Cohort B goes to school on Wednesday and Thursday. Um, and Friday's remote with the week of Thanksgiving. I believe the um Wednesday is a half day. There's no school on Thursday or Friday.
So the thirtieth may make more logical sense.
Well, and just in terms of routines for children, uh, if you go the week of the sixteenth, it's a full week of school and then a cut week. Of kind of one cohort would get certainly more than the other. But.
Any thoughts or comments from the committee about this?
My, my thought with the, the sixteenth was it is the start of a second quarter. Um, I do understand what Dr. Gogan is, is saying and I don't have the information in front of me, but I believe. All of the days in terms of number of days were calculated for each cohort. And somehow I think it was pretty equitable. Even factoring in the Thanksgiving holiday, if that makes sense. I mean, I, I do understand about the routine, um, but. My, my concern would be to delay it any further. Um, and again, the sixteenth is the start of a second quarter. There may be students particularly at the high school level that might have new courses. That begin that day. And it's just never going to be perfect.
I think, no, it's, it's not. As long as we all understand that.
Are there any other thoughts or comments from the committee?
Can I, and we, I can, can I just confirm that we're still meeting on um? Well, when is our next school committee meeting?
The next Tuesday, Mrs. Navarada, be there or be squared. Next Tuesday, Mrs. Naparada, be there or be square.
I guess I'll be there.
Madam Chair, can I speak?
Yes, Mrs. Parmley?
Parmley, Mrs. Parmley.
Yes, please.
Okay, I, you know, I just needed to say this. So I just want to, you know, speak on behalf of the teachers of the WPS. They, and I, you know, I feel very strongly about this. They have had to learn new skills with little to no notice. They've been working non-stop to engage students in a situation that they did not create nor did they ask for. And they have risen above and beyond. And yes, they have been educating our students in a tremendous way. And so I just want to tell you that our teachers deserve to be applauded. No other job are we on camera being critiqued, oftentimes unfairly. These men and women have stepped up. They are planning around the clock and excuse my language, they're doing a hell of a job. And I just want to thank them and applaud them. And we will do this. We want our kids back and we will do this. But I just want to tell you that our, our teachers have done a phenomenal job and we are so proud of them, all of us here in the WPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Parmley. Um, I only have exposure to um, Park Avenue because my, my children are small still. Um, and I'll echo those sentiments. I know that my, my, I'm in the bedroom periodically and when they're at their desks checking in on how they're doing and um, they're, the teachers are doing a great job. So I, I would echo that and thank you. I think that we all needed to be reminded of that tonight. So that's much appreciated. If there are no other questions or comments, oh, Mrs. Nassas?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just, I do want to reiterate what Ms. Parmley said, but I, I, it's hard sitting back and listening to, to both sides. Because we're not trying to keep the kids away from the schools at all. We are busting our butts to try to get them back in, but we still are, the glowing fact is that we are still red. That's scary. And I know that kids, little kids may not be super spreaders. Big kids are. The data supports that. However, I'm not going against us going back. I'm not, we're not here to fight that. But I am sticking up for our union and our group and our staff that we are concerned about our kids. We're concerned about our colleagues. We're concerned about staffing issues. We know that we have to, I mean, I had to be out last week for a couple of days because I came, I was, it was possible that I was around someone that was close. Like that was close contact. It's going to happen. And then it's going to happen. I, I just want you to be aware of that. But I felt like the beginning of it was a bash on teachers and it was really boiling my blood because we're working seventeen hours a day trying to figure out how to get these kids interested on sitting on their computers. We get it. It's hard. It's hard. And we're, we need our support from our, from our community. We do. And I'm in this community too. My daughter's in Park Ave. But we need our support from our community. If we're going to make this successful, we have to be in this together. And that means listening to one another and understanding one another, you know, each other and knowing that this might change. It's not an opportunity to, to rip anybody apart. Enough of that has happened already. That's all.
I want to say that I, you and I forever, I wasn't, it wasn't a dig on you, I promise. It's a dig on the, the whole thing as a concept to say when we were green, we didn't go back. Then it pushed back and it pushed back, but you know what I mean? So it's like now it's got to be three weeks off the red. I didn't mean, at least me, other people can speak for themselves, but I did not mean that as a dig on the, on the teachers at all. I want you safe just as much as I want my kids safe. But the data that um, I apologize, um, Mr. Adenopoulos, if I murdered your name, I'm sorry. That the data shows that it's okay to go back to school. The data around our schools, Douglas, you know, all the, all the other towns around, some of these towns are going back full, not even hybrid and having no cases. So i- if the data wasn't showing that stuff, I definitely would be a hundred percent on saying, saying stay away. But you know, I, I, doctors are saying that the mental health that these kids are going through, that the risk outweighs, you know, the, the benefit of being in school outweighs the risk that some of these kids are, are, you know, really, really in a bad place right now from a mental standpoint too. So I, I just wanted to personally say I was not taking a dig on teachers, Ms. Nassas. I apologize if it came off that way.
Through the chair.
Yes, Mrs. Millet?
Um, I would just like to um, explain my vote in that I was not voting against hybrid. Um, that my concern is that we did not attach safety to that date. But I am not against the students coming back or coming back hybrid. But I am concerned, very concerned that we did not attach anything to do with safety. I just wanted to explain my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate, you know, um, my sincere appreciation for the hard work that's gone into um, the school year. Whether it be from the teachers or um, the administration or quite frankly, the parents too, right? I mean, it does take a village to educate a child. And um, this is no finer, there's no finer example than this, I think. Um, and similar to so many things that are going on in the world right now. Uh, it seems that there are very strong opinions on either side and it can feel very divisive. So um, I just want to acknowledge that and, and express my sincere appreciation for all of the hard work that's gone into educating our kids in very, very difficult circumstances. If there are no other questions or comments from the committee, are there any other questions or comments from the committee? If there are not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Ademopolis?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.